Sarah, Pete's just having some difficulty joining with the text and the call in info. It's just gonna take me a minute to type all those numbers in here. Bear with me.
Is Pete having any luck, Steve? Got it. Okay. Okay, um, this is an emergency meeting of the Mont Vernon School Board that is being called due to the timeline for modifying the proposal to the DOE. We have some new information since our meeting yesterday and our full board meeting last week that we feel is relevant and and worth discussing and amending. Our proposal, so that's our reason for a meeting. What I would like to say is that after our meeting last night, we received some pretty significant community feedback. I was able to talk with the other board members and also express my concern to our superintendent about his funding request. What I did is I asked him to reevaluate it, and that's one of the reasons that we're meeting today to discuss that reevaluation and determine what, if any amendments to our motion needs to be made. So Adam, can you fill everybody in on what we're discussing and why?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So subsequent to our conversation about concerns the board may have had with my funding request that I made last night. And the amount of $293,000, I went back and and reviewed with our principal and eventually with our building staff. What if any changes we could make to our funding request? That would not create a significant impact on the upcoming school year. And so although our modified request does make some reductions in what we're asking for. Those don't come easily to our building or to our staff, and it will have some impacts on on students, but nonetheless, I feel confident that. That these changes will give us what we need to start our school year. I'll cut right to the chase. Our, my updated funding request that I'm going to ask the board to approve. Instead of the, in lieu of the $293,000 amount from last night, my new funding request is less than half of that. The change is from last night to tonight that removes an additional teacher that we'd requested, and this does result in. One grade level at our school being combined from having two in-person teachers to only one. Because one of those teachers will need to support the additional remote environment that the new teacher would have supported. So fifth grade that has 20 students in it will be in one, one classroom to start the school year. It will be in a big classroom and they'll be spread out and there'll be room between them. And that's not a, a large class size by any measure, but it is larger than we had planned for. And we know that some parents, particularly of fifth grade students, might have trouble with that. But that saves us over about $90,000 by itself. In addition, I'm reducing the paraprofessional positions from full time to 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 just under full time and removing. The opportunity for benefits to be associated with those positions, since they will be considered a temporary. Position and and may not even be needed for the full year in the event that we have to go to the remote modality for an extended period of time. In addition, the full-time custodian request is being reduced from full time to three quarters time or three quarters value FTE. I spoke with our facilities director today and we went over this in detail. And although he would prefer a full-time additional custodian, he feels confident that a three-quarters custodian will be able to get the job done for us. So all told, those three changes save us $150,000, $153,000 in total and reduces our funding request to $140,449.
Okay, thank you. I think that's a much more comfortable number. I I do need to state publicly that I think the board is feeling a little bit frustrated by some of the inaccurate representation of the numbers that's happened in the last two meetings. Some things came to us that were not. They were not reflective of the of the ask, and that's led us to have the last meeting and then this meeting again, so. I just need to put that out there because as a, as a board member, as a community member, as a taxpayer, it's frustrating when we cannot make a decision if we can't trust the numbers. So that's one thing that I just need to put out there.
Yeah, and I'm responsible for those numbers and apologize to the board and to the community for the. The inaccurate information that was presented in the past and. Just a reassurance that we'll we'll make sure that it does not happen again.
Thank you. And just to reiterate, the the DOE process that we're exploring. Will, if it goes through, will allow us to use this potential amount, 140,449 from the unexpended fund balance from last year. So it essentially would not be returned to the taxpayers to offset the upcoming tax rate, but it would not also impact it because it's already dollars that have been spent. So I just want to make sure that that is, that that is clear.
That is correct, and should we not expend all of that $140,000 and change? Anything that we don't expend will will subsequently be returned to our taxpayers next tax, tax setting cycle.
Right. Okay. Jess and Steve and Pete, do you have any questions, comments, concerns at this point? I'm happy if you just want to raise your hand so I can see it, because I. Anybody? Mr. O'Keefe?
Uh, Peter just said he didn't have anything at this point. If the host can actually unmute his mic so we can join in on the conversation.
Yeah, all I can do is ask him to unmute. I can't actually unmute him since he called in and I've clicked that button to ask him to unmute, but I, he is permitted to talk.
What's the code to unmute, Adam?
Let me find out.
There we go.
That do it, guys?
You're in, Peter. Good job.
I I do not have anything. I think it's been laid out as best it can be laid out, so I'm good right now.
My only concern was as a parent, so I'm just gonna leave that for for a private concern to Adam and the board.
Great, and I want to echo exactly what you said, Sarah. When we take a look at these decisions and especially when it's dealing with with numbers and in our community and a tough situation. There are really no significant winners here, right? And so our tax dollars are stretched thin as they are. Every dollar is important, every dollar is vital, and I can guarantee that the four other members of our board don't take these decisions lightly. There's been a lot of both negative and positive feedback that's been received to to our board over the past 24 hours. And it's something that we don't take lightly, and I have to echo Sarah's comments with regards to. The situation we find ourselves in revisiting this now for the third time due to inaccurate information, and I know. Our superintendent is going to work hard to to rectify that, and I also want to make sure that it's very clear to the folks that are listening from the public standpoint. That every dollar that is not spent, if we do decide to go remote in October, in November, or let's say February. Is 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 going to be returned back to 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 the taxpayer if I have anything to do with it, and I will vote to make sure that that actually happens. But that's, that's all I've got, Sarah.
Okay, thank you. The other thing that I'd like to say, since I'm sure that some parents may be concerned about the fact that that. That the ask for that teacher is being reevaluated to this point is that. You know, the board is committed to reevaluate the needs of the school as the school year progresses. So it's not something that has to be necessarily set in stone if it, you know, if it looks like, like staffing needs to be adjusted. In September or October, we're certainly going to be, you know, viewing this as a dynamic, as a dynamic process, so. I just wanted to also put that out there that even though we're being, we're being cautious at this point, it does not necessarily mean that. That we would not try and be appropriate if it looks like things are not working well, so I wanted to make sure that parents are aware of that.
And real fast, Adam, if you can just address the folks that are listening from home. The the requests at this point are the absolute bare bones minimum to open up our building. Next week in the safest, most effective and efficient way possible to allow our kids to 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 receive the educational services that they so rightfully need and deserve.
Agreed.
I do have a question from the public that I don't know is able to be asked on Zoom, but the question is, can we get the ratio of the student to teacher in the other classes? Do we know what the ratios are by class?
I'm sorry, I just don't have that available. Christine, do you have that at your fingertips?
I don't, I could try to pull a report for that, but not at my fingertips. You know, our class sizes are typically around 14 or so per grade level, 15 or so, and if a few students are remote. You're looking at 10 or 11 or so in person. I don't have that broken down by grade level, and that is a estimate, but. I think our largest class might be, you know, 30, grade level is like 30 students.
I just, I heard from, I heard from our building principal that depending on the grade level right now, it's between 10 and 15.
Thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, is there any further discussion? I'm scanning.
Pete, anything? Have one quick comment from the public that showed up on the participant list. I think it was Kim Roberch.
Okay, let's take a look. I see that we had one question that was answered. So the question was just asking to explain the new remote instruction plan, how this would look with the changes that have been proposed, the division of teachers for all the grades. And Adam explained that the remote plan stays the same. Adam, I don't know if you have anything else you'd like to add to that?
Only that we're moving a teacher from in person to remote, and so the remote number of teachers remains the same. The the change really is for fifth grade that now has one in-person teacher as opposed to two.
Thank you. We do have one other question from the public, which is, do we know how many students are planning on taking buses?
The answer is yes. Parents who when they fill out the form in Power School to elect in person or remote for each segment, they also have to select what their primary plan is for drop off in the morning and dismissal in the afternoon. And if they want to use the bus at all, they have to select a bus in that form. And so we we know exactly who has done that. And we won't be allowing just anybody to ride the bus this year. You have to sign up for it in order to use it, because we have to make sure we can maintain proper numbers of students on the buses.
Okay, looks like we have a follow-up question to that about schedules being posted.
Yes, and certainly appreciate this member of the public's interest in this issue. So we are we're going to post draft schedules that are almost complete tomorrow, because we've made that promise to our community that they would be posted. The bus company has asked until Monday to finalize them, but I've instructed them that they need to give me what they have for tomorrow to be posted on Saturday. And then there there might be minor revisions that are posted on Monday.
We have another question, which is, is one of the new paraprofessionals being placed in the fifth grade?
So the the new paraprofessionals are regular education paraprofessionals, which is different than our other four special education related paraprofessionals. And the paraprofessionals are to support coverage for our regular education teachers so they're able to have their common planning time. And with our remote and in-person schedule, this was the the critical issue in making the schedule work with these two paraprofessionals. My I prioritize teaching positions over paraprofessionals in general and ask the question, as did you, Sarah, actually, when we talked about this earlier, why not prioritize the teaching position? And the the bottom line is that these paraprofessional positions are enabling the schedule to work for our entire building this year and are the priority even over that additional teaching position, not to mention that both of them together are less than half of the cost of the one full-time teacher.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions. And I can't see if anyone has their hands raised. Adam, do you see if anyone has their hands raised?
I don't see anybody else. I think we're all set.
Okay. Um, any other board members have anything else to add before we talk about amending our motion?
So Adam, can you quickly just explain what the processes for here with the DOE versus the Superior Court filing? Can we do both, run them in tandem? And so we can afford the public an opportunity to to have say if we get approval from the Superior Court? Or is it likely that Superior Court will not hear our motion as a result of the DOE approving our request?
Correct. So the Superior Court would need to be the backstop in this case, because the DOE's approval would remove the need for the Superior Court to weigh in at all. So your motion on the motion last night was to amend your motion from last Monday, which was to file for a special meeting with the Superior Court. Your motion last night was to amend that motion and remove the need for the Superior Court filing if the DOE approves our funding request. And your motion, your suggested motion today is to make to just amend that request to the DOE. So if the DOE were to reject our request for some reason, we would still have the opportunity to file petition with the Superior Court.
Okay. So Stephen, does that provide enough of an explanation for you?
It does. Thank you.
Okay. So what I believe we are looking at is a motion to direct the superintendent to request permission from the Department of Education to expend funds from the unassigned fund balance in the amount of $140,449 from the FY 20 from FY 20 for emergency expenditures per the emergency order number 38 as presented. Tongue twister. So do I have anyone who is willing to make that motion or actually technically amending the motion, but?
I'll amend my motion.
Okay, so the motion as amended is what I just stated.
It's correct. I can read it back if you like.
Does that is that helpful, Adam, or is it okay?
It's okay.
I I can read it back just so it's official with the record. The motions to direct the superintendent to request permission from the Department of Education to expend the funds from the unassigned fund balance in the amount of $140,449 from fiscal year 20 for emergency expenditures per emergency order number 38 as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that motion?
A second.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? Pete, any discussion?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call, vote. Mr. O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mrs. Hinkley?
Yes.
Mr. Eckhoff?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. And our fifth board member, Mr. St. Dennis, was unavailable this afternoon as he had another obligation. Okay, so that motion passes. I don't believe that we have any other business to discuss today. I don't see any other questions that are live. So I want to thank everyone for your time. I thank you for your thoughtfulness. I know that it is it's challenging. This is certainly challenging. But I know as a board member and a taxpayer and someone with kids in schools that I certainly appreciate, you know, the administration's willingness to to take a look at this again and revise and and work with us to make sure that we're doing the best that we can for our kids and for the community.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. The meeting is adjourned.